All right, good evening. 6:00 PM, July 23rd. I'd like to open the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being televised live on local cable channel 8 and 1072 HD. I'd like to have us all rise, so Pledge Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice
Next, does anyone have a public comment regarding anything not related to any agenda items tonight? If so, please check in with Mary Ann, two to my left. And you can have three minutes to make your comment. Anybody have anything that's on the agenda they'd like to discuss? Seeing none, thank you. Next thing, I want to make certain that I always go to the public for public comments, and for some reason I forget, feel free to raise your hand and speak up loud if you need to, because we always want to hear input from whoever wants to give us input. We don't look for repetition, but we do want to hear everyone that wants to be heard. Tonight's sitting will be our three, four regular members and either George and Charlie, depending upon the application. How's that?
Gotcha.
Yeah, let's see, why don't we go-
Well, you have to take attendance, too.
Oh.
So we wanted to enroll call vote.
Sharon Sangalias here.
Ron Barnvisier.
John Ferbusch is here.
Scott Colston is here.
George Kingsmore is here.
Charles Reddy is here.
Okay, so for the first one, because I'm hearing that the first applicant has a problem in reference to his people arriving, is that correct, sir?
Uh, yeah, they're stuck in traffic.
The question I have for you, sir, is it an integral part of your presentation?
I believe they did when I'm giving the opening narrative.
Okay, so we're gonna have to manage that a little bit, right? So, do we want to take it out of order and go to Redwood?
Yeah.
All right.
Traffic's terrible.
So what we'll do is we'll take Redwood out of order, all right? So what we're gonna do is 55 Redwood Circle first. That'll give you some time. Hopefully that will work for you. And does that work for you, counselor?
It's gonna continue, so it's not gonna help you.
Well, just go slow in your breath, in your ask, that's all. All right, so who's gonna sit? Is our five regular members, and why don't we start with George?
Four regular.
Four regular members, sorry, and we'll go with George. How's that? And then we'll go with Charlie next. How's that, Charlie?
I'll be here.
I don't want you to feel, you know-
Slighted.
Yes, so the four regular members and George. So, George, would you like to read 55 Redwood Circle into the record, please?
New hearings, 55 Redwood Circle. Owners Edward D. and Rita E. Papel request a written finding under Section 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for an addition on the right front side of a pre-existing non-conforming structure and reconfiguring an existing deck on property located in R5 Zoning District, map 27, parcel 97, Mashpee, Mass. Received letter dated July 15th through 2025 from the attorney requesting a continuance of the petition.
Counselor.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Attorney Christopher Corrane for the applicant at 55 Redwood. We have asked for a continuance. This project requires conservation approval, and they have not, their date is in August.
So they actually have a date?
Yes, they do, yeah. They think, don't, my understanding is there was maybe a mishap with the public notice for the hearings, so this is getting delayed. So it's at the, I believe it's in the, it's, I believe it's gonna happen in August, so.
So, Mary Ann, what's the first available slot?
September 10th.
September 10th, counselor?
I was aware of that, so yes, that's-
So you're asking for an extension until September 10th?
That is correct.
Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? So, do you have a document? Okay, sign slowly.
Hey, we were supposed to be slow on this one.
I know. What can I say?
Can we do Jeep?
You can do Jeep if you want. Yeah, let's do Jeep. I know Jeep is, Counsel, Jeep will be fine after this, right? I'm gonna walk out, I'm no, I'm in conflict, so, I would be, so.
And that shouldn't take long.
Yeah, so Sharon, you're up to the plate, kid. Make me proud.
Okay, well, you, you- I read Jeep, it's not hard.
Yeah, well, whatever, it's none of my business, I know that. All right, I'm gonna leave the room, just let me know.
And both Charlie and George are gonna be sitting on the next hearing?
Sure.
Two for, who's up?
George.
Charlie, would you like to read the next new hearing into the record?
Sure. Want me to go to Jeep Place first?
Yes.
29 Jeep Place. Owners Hans E. and Sarah J. Brings, trustees of the HAB Realty Trust, request a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace the existing foundation only and lift the existing house and place it back on the new foundation on property located in the R3 in Papa Nasset Overlay District, map 118, parcel 109, Mashpee, Mass.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, for the record, Attorney Christopher Corrane, representing the Brings on 29 Jeep Place, probably one of the more simpler projects I've brought before this board. It's located in the Papa Nasset Overlay District, so as the Board knows, minimum lot area requirements are 6,000 square feet, minimum fruntures of 60 feet, minimum front yard 25 feet, minimum side and rear 15 feet, setback to wetland of 50 feet, max building height is 30 feet, and lot coverage is 25 percent max. We're not located in any flood zones, however, we do have a couple of non-conformities. The front yard setback is 21.3, where it should be 25, and the rear yard is 12.6, where 15 is required. But that being said, we're simply, as the notice said, all we're doing is picking up the house, taking out the existing foundation, which is basically falling apart and not up to code, putting in a new foundation that is, will be code compliant, and putting the house back down. So there's no changes to setbacks, and there's no changes to lot coverage. The existing house is going right back on the foundation, and the foundation is just being replaced in kind.
What about the deck? Show his deck on the front, on the waterside.
The deck's just staying.
Just keep it there and just ignore it there.
Is it on footings?
Um, I don't know, when I took my photos, there's a hedgerow of bushes around it, so I can't tell. But again, we're just picking up the house and putting it back down, so if there's any disturbance to the deck, you know, nothing's being proposed to expand any of the structures.
Dave, do you have any comments?
The deck isn't on the, isn't on the foundation, as far as I know.
I don't have any issues on it.
George, would you like to read in the letters?
Sure. Conservation, 29 Jeep Place. This project was issued an order of conditions by the commission on June 26th, public meeting, no mitigation required. They are still awaiting receipt of a nitrogen loading calculation as required by MASTRI's Chapter 172 Wetland Bylaw Regulation 30. No work may commence on this project until receipt of this information.
Since there's a septic, they don't have to upgrade, this type of work, they don't have to upgrade the septic? You're not replacing the house, you're lifting it, are they not required to replace the septic?
Yeah, they're doing no additions.
That's strange.
It's basically, yeah, they come here because they're making a change. You know, they're probably being, it's probably gonna be have a little space afterwards, and that's when we have to deal with the septic if they put in bedrooms.
I just, I just thought it was odd that, how would it be like?
Well, it says septic to be upgraded to IA.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, there is an upgraded septic as part of this proposal. It is going, yes, it is going, I'm sorry.
Board of Health.
I didn't bring it up because it was not zoning, but yes, they are putting an IA system's going as part of this project.
29 Jeep Place, Board of Health. Board of Health, subject to be upgraded to IA's house to remain three bedrooms. Septic plans needed to be uploaded to the health department permit for final review.
Now it makes sense.
Yep, now it makes sense.
My bad, I missed that.
There's one about our letter. June 5, 2025, from Rita Crowell. Number, let me just make sure there's just one here. Number 25 Jeep Place, to whom it may concern. I am writing to express my full support to my neighbor's Hans Brings, who is planning to install a new septic system and undertake repairs to the foundation of their home at 29 Jeep Place, Mashpee, Mass. As the closest neighbor, I understand the importance of maintaining safe, healthy, and environmentally responsible living conditions. The repairs and replacement of the septic system is necessary for the health and well-being of all residents. Additionally, proper foundation repair is essential to ensure the integrity of the home and safety of its occupants. I have no concerns regarding the proposed work and support any permits or approvals needed to move the project forward.
So as the Board knows, they're, under 174-17, your determination is whether or not it's substantially more detrimental to the neighbor than what currently exists. So in this particular case, I think where we're not changing setbacks, not changing lot coverage, IA system going in and putting in a new, what will be a code compliant foundation, are all positives to the, to the project.
I have one question. Is the height gonna change?
No.
Going up on the foundation?
No, because it's not in the flood zone, so you don't have to raise it above, like the first floor elevation, it's not in the flood zone, so. And the house itself is only 16, it's a one-story, it's only 16 feet, so we're not even gonna be coming close to the 30 feet max in Papa Nasset Overlay.
Do I have any comments from anyone in the audience regarding this application? Does someone want to close public comment?
Move to close.
Any more questions?
Second.
Let's vote to approve closing the public comment.
He's gonna do the motion.
Yeah, he made the motion, he seconded. All in favor?
All right.
Oh, for the color comment.
Yes, okay. Any other Board comments regarding this application?
Nope.
Charlie, would you like to read the motion?
Motion relative to 29 Jeep Place. Owners Hans E. and Sarah J. Brings, trustees of the HAB Realty Trust, request a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace the existing foundation only and lift the existing house and place it back on the new foundation on property located in the R3 in Papa Nasset Overlay District, map 118, parcel 109, Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions, motion. Number one, the Board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass General Laws 48, Section 6, 2, site plan. 29 Jeep Place, date June 3, 2025, scale 1 inch equals 20 feet, prepared by Bay Colony Group Inc., stamped and signed by Richard Leslie, professional land surveyor, number 38384. Number three, condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Conservation Department and Board of Health. Number four, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. And, number five, the Board finds under 174-17 that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure are used to either the town or the neighborhood. I'll second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Motion passes.
Want me to go get Ron? Did he go that way or that way?
He's in his car.
He's in his car?
Pulling out.
He's left. He's gone.
No, I'm kidding. Seen quite a bit more of the putting a new foundation in or repairing the old foundation and moving the house to a significant project.
There you go. I was thinking what kind of shape the house is in there.
I agree.
So.
Is she good?
We good?
Not yet. There's nothing else.
Counselor, you understand why we're having this meeting today, right? Basically for you.
The Forum likes us to, to get started.
I, as a chair, I think we need to do that.
Absolutely.
I can't, I've held you off as long, I've helped you as much as I can to hold it off. So why don't we wait till this?
Hold on, let's bring this back.
Well, this hasn't gone back yet.
Save 30 seconds.
Unless you want to-
Do you want to see how far up there?
That's okay.
Well, if we're still, if they get in, they can still speak.
Do they have house plans?
All right, so anyway, sitting on this one will be, anyone, so our four regular members and, well-
They both did it, right?
So, all right, so then Charlie, how's that?
Okay.
All right, so if you would read 25 Monhasset Road into the record, please, Charlie.
Okay. In the new hearings for this evening, on number 25 Monhasset Road, owners David J. and Diane C. Buzarian, trustees, request a special permit under 174-17 and 174-17.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise a three-bedroom pre-existing non-conforming dwelling and replace it with a new three-bedroom dwelling on the existing foundation on property located in the R3 Papa Nasset Overlay Districts, map 123, parcel 107, Mashpee, Mass.
Counselor.
All right, good evening, Brian Wallace with JC Engineering.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were the counselor, so you are an engineer.
I'm an engineer, yes.
My apologies.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. So-
I think you insulted him.
Yeah. So the premise of the project is the owners are looking to tear down the existing dwelling and retain the existing foundation and construct a new two-story dwelling on that foundation. The non-conformity that we have is the side setback. It's 13 feet on the left-hand side, whereas 15 feet is required, so that is the reason we are in front of you tonight. We've met with Conservation last month and obtained, or actually was, yeah, it was last month, and obtained approval, as you are aware. A big point we wanted to make with Conservation is to just absolutely minimize disturbance to the land around the house. The idea is just to take down the house, wood frame, and construct on the existing foundation without really causing any disturbance to the existing ground. So when we filed with Conservation, that was, that was a major point for us, you know, in terms of the scope of the project. We also received just recently some Board of Health comments, as, again, the Board may be aware, that the system, the septic system would require implementation of an IA technology. So they gave us a bit of guidance on that, and we're looking to implement a sludge hammer retrofit into the existing septic tank. It's pretty non-invasive, it's just simply something you would place inside the septic tank that's there now, wouldn't require any excavation beyond just digging out the cover of the tank and the cover of the D-box as well. So that's, that's sort of the scope of the project here. You know, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the Board might have.
Okay, Charlie, could you read letters into the record?
Yeah, we have Conservation Department, we have Board of Health. Conservation Department receives 72225 for 25 Monhasset Road. This project was issued an order of conditions by the commission at their June 26th public meeting, no mitigation required. Number, okay, a Board of Health receives 72225, 25 Monhasset Road. Raise and replace will trigger the IA 1000 regulation requiring nitrogen removal to be added to the septic, house to remain three bedroom. house to remain three-bedroom. Is that the extent of the letters, Mary Ann?
I have no, but all letters, nothing else.
All right, seeing no other letters, board questions, please. I have several.
This, I'm just looking at this covered porch. That's all, is that increasing the footprint?
Yes.
That is, yes. So the, the covered porch would be constructed on sonotube footings in the front.
Yeah, lot covered, not even closed, so that's not an issue. And the setback is it's 20, it's 25, right, because it's Papaneset?
That is correct. Yep, 25 foot required.
The only thing I saw that's just, you're the engineer, if you can just verify on the height, it's well under the 30, but it's looking like a level lot that grade is the existing that it's coming off of?
Yes, yeah, so.
It's got to be, because they're not replacing the foundation.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, you're not digging anything, so you can't change the grade, so, yeah, I guess that makes sense.
So I have.
That's why I was confused when I saw that. Okay.
Two questions. So Board of Health is allowing you to use a sludge hammer system?
Yeah, it was a recent note to us on that, and that's actually a recommendation.
Just want to know, I mean, that's not a, I'm just trying to understand, that's all.
Yes, yeah.
So your application does not include the removal of the, of the foundation?
That is correct, yep.
So you're going to keep the 10-inch, no footing, no steel, presumably, foundation?
That was my next question.
Yeah, they had a structural engineer go out and do an assessment, and their recommendation was.
Well, just to let you know, 45 years ago, somewhere along there, I tried that, didn't work very well because I cracked the foundation, structure you looked at, said, and the statement here is, it's your business to keep or not keep, although I'd like to hear from the building inspector or the zoning enforcement officer, but it's important for you to know that if in fact you have to take this foundation out, you've got to come back here.
Yep, totally.
So you've got to file, go through the whole process again, presumably depending upon whether this board determines it's a major change or minor change. You could be two or three months into a process with that. But I'd love to hear from David in reference to this.
It's confusing because we both build a lot of homes, and I've never seen a foundation without a footing and steel.
Yeah.
Every one.
I've got to believe this, this goes back far enough where it's a 10-inch wall with no steel at all, and you're always going to try and dig a house out of it.
And they put a two-story house on it from a one-story.
I got to tell you, I am, but you know what? That's not a, I guess. It's not our jurisdiction, but I just want you to know, if a section of it you have to dig out or a whole foundation.
David, you'll be looking for a stamp, something stamped from the structural engineer.
Well, I have a letter from the structural engineer. Are you the structural engineer?
Oh, no, I'm the architect, the designer.
Oh, you're the designer. So I got a, from the structural engineer talking about the, the visit to the, to the site, but he's, he's saying there's going to be structural changes to framing and there's going to be adding footings. I haven't seen those plans, and I wondered if, if does, does the owners understand that? There's still going to be a lot of work going on.
I can address that if you like. The original, the framing plans are almost complete at this point. The original design was going to be to have eye joists, clear span eye joists for the first and second, for the second floor frame, because the first floor frame is going to remain in place as it is. So what happened is when the structural engineer did his evaluate, his site visit and his evaluation, he found that he wasn't comfortable with the loads that were being kicked out because with the eye joists, as you know, the snow loads and the floor loads were all kicked out to the outside wall. So that's why we're in the process of amending the structural plans because right now, we're going to create a center-bearing column line with a steel I-beam or some LVLs, he gave us a couple of options. But that, because of that design, it's going to cut the tributary area that was going out to the outside walls in half, and that's why he produced that letter. But the final structural design is not complete.
Who's designing it?
The structural engineer, Pavel, who signed that letter.
This guy, the guy that wrote, it implies that he's designed it, but I've never seen. It doesn't go, this means nothing to me without that.
Footprint doesn't change, it doesn't, it's out of our jurisdiction, but.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I think it's huge, it's very important to understand whether a foundation comes out or a section of that wall comes out and you've got to replace it, we expect you to come back here. Yeah, I definitely, I share their concerns with, with this not being a total raise and replace because it's, the foundation is not up to today's standards. So they're making, they're transferring loads. I haven't seen those plans. All I see is these plans you got. Yeah, I have some framing plans, and they don't match. So I, I share their concerns completely. It's not going to save any time. You can't start the project. You're not going to, you're not going to be able to start the project. It's not going to help you in any time, and you could run into a higher expenses, a higher expense than, than just ripping it down and redoing the whole thing. What was the driving factor to save the foundation? If you don't mind me asking.
I think we'd have to defer that question to the homeowners.
Excuse me, my name is Diane Bizarian.
You need to come up to the mic, please, and just give your name, please, and your involvement in the project. Thank you, thank you very much.
My name is Diane Bizarian, and this is my family's home. My parents built it in 1963. And they, they, you know, went to great lengths to maintain it constantly. It was always well-maintained. The foundation, there's not a crack in it. It's very solid. And, you know, we were originally going to keep the lower level and just add up. And every contractor that we spoke to said that's not a good idea. You're going to have 1963, you're going to have to rip everything out. It's not going to come up to code. So we want you to consider going down to the foundation and then building up. So we, okay, we thought about it. We contacted our architect slash consultant, and we went through all of the plans, and we had the foundation inspected by a structural engineer, and he said that we would have to make some adjustments because there are four lally columns, I believe, in the basement at this time for a single ranch. And we'd have to make some structural changes, and, and that's the plan. That's what we've been working on.
Well, I guess it's far beyond this board to, to make that decision. It's your, it's your right to request to build on an existing foundation. I'm not. So you've got four lally columns in the center.
We're thinking like builders, and it really.
Yeah. This calls for two, two additional roles of lally columns.
Right.
With footing.
We're not finishing the basement off at all. There's nothing, my husband and I are going to retire there. We both have a lot of issues with arthritis, so we have no plans on going downstairs for anything. Everything's already located on the first floor for us. So it's not a question of what the basement is going to look like. We just.
Do, like, when they said that they don't recommend you going up a second story, part of that, most of it, to me, is because the foundation is not up to snuff.
Well, I think if you, if I could just address that. They, they did not say they don't recommend going to second story. They, they recommended not keeping the first floor there. They felt if they went to the first floor deck and rebuilt the two stories, you know, of course, the whole house would be built up according to code. And that, that design also, the, the structural plans you're going to get are going to be stamped and certified by a professional structural engineer.
I would probably want a, a construction control affidavit for it, too.
Yeah, we can provide that.
All right, so I would want that. I mean, again, I share, I can see that this could go sideways. I do believe that. I'm not trying to say that if you conformed all about building codes and this is a start, that's a good idea. I mean, it's not a good idea, but, I mean, I don't know if it's a good idea or not. I don't know if it's going to save you money. It's certainly not going to save you time. I don't know if that's the driving force either.
In terms of what? Removing the foundation?
You can't start the project until you get everything registered and what's going on. And I. And satisfy him. That's going to be a bigger task. And again, I'm concerned because I haven't seen these drawings. I haven't seen the changes. If it changes the, the outlook of the house, what you got, it might be a problem.
Well, if you don't mind, if, because we'd like to address whatever concern you have tonight as much as we could, in going sideways, in what way, I'm not really following.
Yeah, the, the foundation does, it doesn't support what you're, what you're doing, or this doesn't work. I, I think I can help you, Clint. So this board is not going to get into whether you should keep it or not keep it.
Right.
You've made an application that says you want to keep your foundation. You have a right to do that. The board will oversee this decision based on that theory. But understand, if you, if you do not keep it after this board makes a decision and presumably it approves your application, you're going to have to come back to this board. We meet once a month, and so you could be two or three months out just to get another meeting. So we're just saying to you that any changes to this foundation, whether you, a piece of it or all of it has to be replaced, you've got to come back here. Number two, when you're done with us, okay, and let's say we approve it. Let's just say that. I can't tell you that for sure. Your next step is to go to the building department and satisfy that gentleman right there.
Yes, well, we appreciate, we understand that. Thank you.
Okay, just so we understand. The other major concern here is the covered porch is flush with the house. You've got 15.4 feet on the covered porch. You go down the line, you're definitely encroaching on a 15-foot. It's only five inches. That looks like you're encroaching by a foot. If you encroach in that, that's a variance. So that has to be.
Yeah, that 15.4 is not a correct number.
It is to the corner of the house, but it wouldn't be to the corner of the covered porch.
Yeah, but they, they want the covered porch.
Yeah, so your covered porch, we wouldn't be able to approve the covered porch the way it is. It's going to, it's going to be a variance. Yeah.
I see what you're saying, because the offset's taken to the house of the corner and not to the porch.
Exactly. So your, your covered porch corner is going to be in less than 15.4, which means you're, you're creating a more of a non-conformity.
So we'll have to have the surveyor amend, we'll have to have the surveyor amend that and take it to the,
Right.
Which will cut, we'll have to jog the porch in a little bit.
So I can tell you, as chair of the board, I'm going to recommend to the board at this point, although I haven't gone through the whole process, I haven't listened to the, to the butters and the neighbors, et cetera, if there are any. We may have to extend the application just to get clarity on that 15.4.
Yeah, that number's not good.
Exactly.
We've done this before, where we need that number, because that's what's going to get recorded.
It's definitely below, it's definitely approaching.
Without a doubt.
Why don't we keep going? Any other questions of the board? Why don't we go ahead?
No, as a zoning board, no.
Okay.
But I just want to make a comment. I did the same thing a couple of years ago. I took my parents' summer house, had no footings, found it was cheaper to get rid of the foundation and start fresh. So I'm just telling you, I did the same thing. I had a foundation, I knew the, the previous owner. Only my, my parents were the previous owner. I knew what the upkeep was, but we elected to get rid of the foundation.
But you have, you, your application, you have a right to keep it. It's your decision.
As a zoning board, we have no issue. I just, this is just advice, which take it or leave it. As a home builder, if I was your contractor, I would have a, I would make you sign something saying I take no responsibility after the house gets built if that foundation fails.
Even with a structural engineer's stamp?
Because he could be wrong.
Yeah.
I just know what we have to do now to put a foundation in. That's just advice, and you can do what you want with it. It's probably.
And I can tell you, doing the same thing like 50 years ago, building same thing, all right, I had a fire in a house. So I, in my, you know, my twenties or whatever, whatever it was when I was trying to take the fire, the house that was charred out and keep the foundation because the insurance company wouldn't pay me for it, I ended up cracking it. It was just a 10-inch wall, no footing, no steel. I put a crack in it. Structure engineer says, you know what, I'm not going to certify it. I ended up taking the whole thing out after trying to save it, hours and hours upon hours. Stupid move on my part. I would never do it again. But you know what? You have a right to ask for it, and this board will.
I have no problem if you want to do that.
So let me, let me continue if I may, unless the board has any other questions?
No, the only issue I have is that setback.
Okay, same here. Audience input. Anybody in the audience have anything to say in reference to this application? Yes, sir. If you could come up to the mic, say your, give your name and your involvement and your address, please.
Okay, David Bizarian, I'm the, you know, co-owner of the, of the house in question. And, and talking with the engineer regarding, regarding the structural integrity of the, of the building, it was our understanding that with a steel beam going, going through the, you know, going through, through the house is that it would disperse the, the pressure from the second floor to the foundation. And that, my understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, you need, there was a limit on the, the PSF, and that with that steel beam, that it, it lowered that so that the steel beam would resolve the problem. Now, yeah, it is a concern of mine, where you're saying, well, you, you tried to do the same thing, and you're saying the foundation.
You know what, sir? I, I think as a chair, we're heading down the wrong road. You've made an application. We're not professionals in reference, we're not structural engineers. No one on this board is a structural engineer. If you have a structural engineer who's telling you which way to go, that's your business to pay attention to.
He's got the license, he's got the stamp.
It's none of our business. I can only tell you that, you've heard from members of the board, we don't want to tell you which way to go in reference to keeping it and not keeping it. All I have to tell you, though, as chairman of this board, when the motion's made, if it's made, and you obtain an approval, if you obtain an approval, it's going to be as follows. Any changes to this plan, you've got to come back to this board. If you, if your structural engineer says we're going to take this section of this wall out or the whole wall out, you're coming back, making another application with that lady right there. It's going to be advertised. We're going to go through this whole process over again, and you're going to be months away. That's your call. Now, I can tell you, I'm going to ask as chairman of this board for an extension. Why? Because one member brought up an issue, and I concur 100%. Your setbacks are not depicted correctly. Okay, all right, so that is a problem because your plan is incorrect.
Can't sign an incorrect plan?
We can't do that. And so I can't, I can't be part of signing onto a plan that's incorrect.
Are we talking about the site plan, sir?
Yeah.
Yes, your proposed site plan is incorrect.
The site plan, right there.
You are creating, you are expanding a non-conformity, and you have a raise and replace. You don't have a right to do that.
Is this a result of the porch?
The neglect to say that the setback, the side setback to the, to the left is non-conforming, but they did not say the, the front, the frontage is non-conforming, which it is. Right. So the frontage is, that's another non-conformity. So there are, yes. You've, you've got some site planning work that you've got to do.
May I speak on that for a moment? So, so that's certainly something we can, we can address quite easily by just cutting back that porch a little bit. We actually added on, on the other side a couple of feet to avoid a conflict with the septic pipe, so.
Well, stop one second. You just said you just added on to the other side.
On this plan accurately reflects from when we started the process, sorry.
I get nervous when people make statements like that.
Yes, and would you guys be willing to come back to the porch on that side? Yeah, so, you know, to meet that 15, 15-foot requirement would just be a matter of reducing the length of the porch, not directly at the corner, but we could cut it back probably a couple of feet. I'm wondering if.
So the plan is going to change?
The board would be willing to.
I'd have to leave that up to the board.
Accept that as a condition of.
Historically, this board wants to make certain that plans are correct.
Yeah.
The reason, yeah, the reason I don't like it that way is because this is what's going to get recorded with the registry of deeds, and it's going to be incorrect. Even though you say, well, we're going to pull it back two feet. We can't just draw around there. It needs to be.
This plan gets signed by the chair, which is me, and stamped, along with other documents. And so I'd be, I'd be signing off on a document that's incorrect.
Understood, yep.
And that's a problem. So I, I can only tell you, as one person, even being the chair, I only have one vote, I would not be in favor of that because the plan has to be right.
But as one member, if you came back with the correct number there, I don't have any issues with this.
Yeah, I'm, I, I think the rest of it, I don't, I mean, David brought up another issue. What was the second issue about front yard setback? They don't list that as a non-conformity? Yeah, that's a non-conformity. Yeah, you've got to make sure that that front yard setback is listed as a non-conformity. It's not a problem, but you've got to list it. Standing on that, so that's, you know, that's. You've got to list that. It's not a variance, but.
Yeah, that is, that is correctly listed.
Or is it because of, is it because of?
It does go to that corner.
It's Papaneset, it's only 25 feet.
Yep.
Required.
Is this in Papaneset?
This is Papaneset.
All right, so that's fine. So the bottom line is, is I don't have a problem. Was it in Papaneset, 25?
I believe so. Papaneset's 25, isn't it?
25 feet.
25 feet.
All right, I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry. Why don't I do this? I'll poll the board for you to make sure that this is the only issue it looks like right now, so that way when you come back, as long as you correct that front porch issue, you should be fine. So who's sitting right now? So Charlie, what is your thoughts? My thought is come back with a correct plan, and from what we've heard and talked about, you'll probably be able to get the board's approval, but you need the correct plan before we can vote on it. Scott?
Totally agree with that. I just want to confirm, this is a 25-foot setback required. Okay, then the only issue I have is just that porch sliding back.
Okay. Jonathan?
I agree with both.
Okay.
I agree with them too.
I agree with them too.
And I agree too. So it sounds to me like you'll be fine, it's just do your homework in reference to, correct the plan, do a little bit of homework, but that's up to you. You certainly have, you have this Board's favorable looking upon your plan, including the keeping of your foundation if you choose to do so. But that's between you and the zoning enforcement officer and building inspector, if this Board approves. So, would you like to ask for an extension?
Yes, to the next available.
And when would that be?
September 10th.
September 10th.
Do we have August available?
Sold out.
Sold out. See, that's what I'm saying. If, if you have a foundation issue, you're gonna be, woo. So, sold out, so you're looking at September 10th.
There's no way to squeeze us on there.
Didn't we just squeeze this one in?
It should be.
Yeah, we weren't even supposed to meet tonight.
I understand.
And you know what? We're okay with that. We're totally fine with that. It's not a problem. But our secretary works overtime and has sleepless nights, and we don't want her to have any more sleepless nights, and she already has.
Yeah.
So September 10th.
Yeah, the contract is gonna run out, and the money's just gonna be out there first.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, I just, you know what, we give our time for nothing and we're just, you know.
We, we understand that, but the reason for this special meeting too is because the notice wasn't sent to the papers and allowing enough time.
And we, and you know what? To correct that, we're here tonight.
I understand that, but we're just asking, asking for a little consideration too, to maybe just squeeze it to the variance or a, a correction, which might take only a couple of minutes, and we, you know, of your time on your next meeting in August.
I have no idea what's on the agenda. It's up to Mary Ann.
Sounds to me like the agenda's, is the agenda full?
It is.
If the agenda's full, there's just, you know.
Okay.
All right, so September 10th.
Yep.
You're, you're asking for an extension until September 10th? Am I correct?
Guess that's the cards were dealt.
All right, I'd like to get a motion to.
I'll make that motion.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your time.
I did go out to the public, didn't I? Did. Yes, I did.
She did.
All right.
And I'll leave it.
So, see, I think.
I gotta sign.
You gotta sign this.
Don't you sign, you're leaving?
I gotta sign before I can.
I know.
Run. I would dismantle that house piece by piece. You can't use a machine on that. You correct that foundation?
I know. Been there, done that.
Not our concern.
We do free advice.
Do what we can do. All we can do.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's enough, sometimes it's not.
You listen and act, sir.
Maybe if your engineer had the plan right, we wouldn't have had this plan.
I know.
Right?
Exactly. Exactly.
No comment?
No, once you say we're gonna fix it in two weeks and get you the plan, why don't you approve it now? Then, who knows what's gonna happen?
They haven't, didn't do it. We approved the wrong plan. You can't do that.
We approved the wrong plan.
Yep.
That's what's happening.
Yep.
Scott, see ya.
I'll bring that back.
7/23, 25.
Take care, everybody. See you in a couple of weeks.
Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay out of the hot sun. Gonna be hot.
Where I hit the golf ball, there's no sun.
Okay.
I'm in the shade all the time.
You mean you're in the trees?
Yep.
There you go, good move.
Yeah.
All right, so let the record note that Scott is leaving the room.
Yep.
So it's gonna be the three regular members and the two associates. Isn't that nice? All right, so we've got Other Business, which is 14 Capstan Circle. Charlie, would you like to read 14 Capstan Circle, please?
Okay, Other Business, 14 Capstan Circle. Owners, Robert and Tracy McDonald, requesting approval of modifications related to grade and architectural design pursuant to 17424 C9A of the zoning bylaw. The Board has to vote and determine if said modifications are major or minor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, for the record, Attorney Christopher Kram, representing the McDonald's. With me tonight is Eka from Architect Associates in the back, the architect of the project, and Mark Depp from Cape and Islands. This is a project that was approved by special permit for a raise and replace. We're back before this Board for changes to the plan that we're hopeful can be blessed as a minor modification. So, the sub, the real substantive change to this project is, I tried to make it easy for the Board.
Existing.
Yep, I gave you.
Proposed.
In yellow, I gave you what the Board approved.
Okay.
For the special permit. That's what's highlighted in yellow.
Yep.
The pink is what the modification is.
All right.
If that makes sense.
Does?
It does.
It's a lot of sense, thank you.
So, I'm starting with the, if you can fill up page three, which is the elevations.
Existing and proposed.
Existing, the yellow.
Existing.
Okay, page three.
I think it's page three.
So you want us on?
The elevation, so it is page, page four.
So A4 is page three. All right.
All right. So the car lift was originally approved, it was approved with a garage on the first floor.
Yep.
And then there was a car lift that would take the cars down to the basement.
Okay.
And so, with the, with the, the new plan, we're now moving the garage down to the basement floor, getting rid of the car lift. Okay, so now it drives down, go into the garage, and now there will be living space above where the, where the, where the car, where the car garage was originally gonna be. And those interior changes are all highlighted on pages A, A1, 1, and A2. So, instead of this being a garage, now it's, you know, a dining room, mudroom, laundry. So, it's just interior. And then, you'll also note, where we had these two small windows, now we're doing a door and two larger windows.
So what comes to my brain immediately is, is how you're dealing with the drainage flow with now that driveway that's going, you're gonna put a drain across the front of the garage door or something, and isn't the site plan gonna change?
Yes, it is. So there is some changes to the site plan, which grading. Originally, the water was going towards Capstan.
Yep.
Now it's going towards the house, which I think is a better, you know.
Well, it is, other than, I hope the homeowner understands, in freezing and thawing conditions, you know, enjoy their garage maybe getting flooded.
No, understood. And, and the whole reason for this change is, is that the car lift just wasn't a good design when you're in a flood zone. So.
What concerns me as much is it's not a great design to have a basement floor. And so is, the basement floor can't be below the flood zone then, correct?
Mark Depp with Cape and Islands Engineering. It's a storage area, you know.
They're storing a car?
Yes, you, you can store a car in this. That's what you can do.
I know, 'cause I did one in Manchester by the sea, and this, and the, and the car was in the flood zone, and it floated away. It actually did, in one of the floods.
Right, and under FEMA, when we do houses with pilings, you have the cars underneath the.
I get it, but it concerns.
Yep, and on this, so this is the original. We had going up to that, we had some walls and some stairs getting over to this side. Proposed now, we're going down, and basically the driveway's just sloped slightly to the, you know, if you're in Capstan, to the right. So the, the, any runoff will just go through this vegetated area, through this vegetated area.
Can I, do we have a full-size site plan for the Board? I'm more concerned, as, and I'm not following my procedures here, because I wanna get things right on the record and all, although this is just a discussion, really, so. What concerns me is not really the, the house design, whether the windows move, whether.
But that's part of what we have to come back.
I, I totally understand why you gave it to us. My concern is the site plan more than anything.
Understood.
Okay, by far. Now, I'm not saying the rest of the Board's like that, but for me, I despise myself, the garage floors below grade of a road or gutter line, because drainage systems, as you know, fail and have problems. I'm not, I haven't even looked at the site plan, 'cause it's so small, I can't tell by looking at this.
You might consider the larger one.
You want this one? You can have this one.
Whatever you got that I can actually see, 'cause my eyes used to be great, but they're not as great as they used to be.
Switch.
Yeah, here, why don't you keep this one? You take this and give me that.
That would be ridiculous.
All right, this is nice. I like this now.
So, you know, that garage level, it's, it's not in a hole, you know.
Say again?
The site continues, it's not like in a hole. So the site continues to go down, so we're just letting the water slope off to the, to the west.
Well, I see, I see an 870 and an 890, and I see an apron at 12-0. Am I, am I wrong? I mean, I'm looking at this quickly, right? I'm showing 11, 10, 9, heading towards the house.
Right, it slopes towards the house. What Mark is saying is, is at the garage, we're diverting the water into this landscaping.
Around and down. We're just, it's just gonna flow this way, go around and just down through vegetated areas.
Does the homeowner know that their?
Water on the lawn. The water has to be pretty smart.
I mean, I guess from a standpoint, from a standpoint of the town, you're, you know, the fact that the water's going towards the house and not into the street is, is a great thing.
Right.
From a standpoint, if I were this homeowner, I'd be having sleepless nights.
Well, this is the design that they've approved.
Okay.
Well, I gotta tell you, we're not, no one on this Board is an engineer. It just concerns the heck out of me. Do you get a release like Mark when you do these things?
It, it, it'll flow off this way, and just.
To the side of the house?
Yes, and then the, the grade.
And I, and I see, I see a catchment, I see the, the design, the, the basin there, right? I get it.
Yeah, I'm in.
Wow.
But again, we're not putting water into the street, you know, we're not putting water to the neighbors.
Totally understand, but I think it's imperative upon myself to say the following to you. I'm concerned about the design for the homeowner. Period.
Is it actually going by the garage? Is that what's happening?
That's what.
Right, yes, it'll, it'll go this way.
So it's going like this, Charlie? Goes down, like that. So it comes from the street, comes like this, and then rolls like that, and goes around the house. My concern is velocity, it all depends on velocity, right? If you've got a very, very, if you've got a two-inch storm, and if it could happen, 10 minutes, I, I don't think that's gonna work real well.
Like they had in Texas.
My point is, is, and when this house gets inundated, there's, you know, but I'm not the design engineer, that's yours. I just think it's imperative that if I know something and I'm concerned for a homeowner, I'm on the record saying it. I don't want this Board, one second, I, I don't want to be part of that liability.
Understood. And I, I just wanna mention one other thing. You know, when we, when I come before the Board for these minor modifications, I wanna make sure that the Board knows that there's no setback changes proposed, and there's no lot coverage changes proposed.
Understood. I think the biggest thing here that's proposed, as far as I'm concerned, is the site plan change.
Right.
And I remain very concerned.
I mean, I guess the only thing I can suggest to the Board, I mean, and I leave it to the homeowner, Mark, if they wanna put some more drain, I just don't wanna have to come back to this Board if they put another drywall in.
It's not my job to design, it's not my job, I'm not an engineer, never professed to be one, I, I'm just enough to be dangerous. And that being said, I dislike, you know, I don't like those designs historically, and I get it, but I don't want this Board or this town to have any liability.
No, understood.
And I'm telling you right now, I'm concerned for the homeowner. It's your job between the homeowner and you, because you're the engineer. I'm just concerned, and I don't want any liability whatsoever for the town or us.
Understood.
Okay? And ma'am, you wanted to say something?
My name is Ekaterina Labovich from Architect Associates. I just want to say that the clients have seen and approved the design, so any risk that there is possible to water coming into their house, they're well aware of, and they're willing to take on that risk.
But you know what happens a lot to us as, as Board members? We have people that say, we really love the fact that this house is gonna be built, and, and so, in other words, an earbutter will say, we really want this house built, and they don't understand, and we've had this happen more than once, that if this house were built the way that it was submitted, that they're gonna inundate it with water, and then all of a sudden, the, the drainage has been amended, more drainage added. They, sometimes homeowners really don't understand what path they're going down. And I'm not saying Mark is trying to do anything devious. He's come in front of this Board many years, he's done a great job for many people, I'm not questioning that, I'm not saying that. What I am saying is, just because homeowners aren't questioning it, doesn't mean it shouldn't be, or, or they don't understand. That's my point.
These homeowners in particular were very concerned with the flood zone that, where their house is located. So from the beginning, we designed this house to be actually taller than it needed to be. So they are well aware of the water that is around their house that can come into their house, so they are willing to take the risk.
But think what you just said through. The homeowners are concerned about it, so they made, they had you design the house higher than it had to be, but then they put a, a garage.
Yeah, I mean, their existing habitable basement is at elevation six, and now it's at nine. You know, they're, it, it is what it is, you know, the, the flood zone's at 11, they wanna park their car at nine, you know it can happen, so.
And so I think it's, I think it's a pair, the homeowners know that if there, if there's a flood coming, and there's a risk of the flood moving your car, 'cause it's going underwater, in that direction. And I don't care how you're gonna, I don't care if the drainage does this all day long, it's not gonna work. Possibly not gonna work, better way to put it.
The previous design had the car going into the basement that would need electricity to get back up. At least now they can.
But, but you had a generator that was up, you know, above the flood zone, so that would've worked. All I'm saying is, I'm not trying to, there's no one in the audience here, all I'm trying to say to you is, this Board doesn't wanna accept liability, the town doesn't wanna accept liability, it's on you, and I'm just bringing an issue to, to the forefront here, and I'm fine. How would the Board like to proceed?
Why don't I read into the record what I've received from the different agencies, okay?
Perfect.
There's nothing important from Board of Health, it just says no change in bedroom count to remain three-bedroom. Conservation Department, the Commission issued an order of conditions for this project on 5/20/24. Any revised plans that differ from the plan of record presented to the Conservation Commission must be provided to Conservation staff for review. And we have a, let me go to the earbutter first.
Well, I just wanna say something about Conservation. There was a revised noti, note from Drew. This actually did get administrative approval.
Right, and I have that.
Okay, so I, those probably should be read in conjunction, instead of jumping from.
So, Chris, you're saying that this amendment or modification was approved.
Administratively, administratively.
Well, let me get to that. This was dated 5/16/25 to Cape and Islands, from Dan Kent. Administrative approval of 14 Capstan Circle. Dear Cape and Islands Engineering, this letter is written for the purposes of administratively approving the following activities on your client's property at 14 Capstan Circle. Requested changes to the plan of record for order of conditions 43-3268 within wetlands jurisdiction, but has been deemed minor in scope and thus will not require permitting. Removal of car lift, reduction of fill-in driveway footprint, and shifting of IA septic system to east property line in accordance with revised plan of record dated 5/16/25. Please note the following conditions of this administrative approval. Submission of two hard copies of revised stamped plan of record to the Conservation Department. Sincerely, Dan Kent. And a letter from Janine Burke, dated July 22/25, to whom may concern, my husband and I, Janine and Bill Burke, are neighbors of Tracy and Bob McDonald, who live at 14 Capstan Circle. We are aware of their proposed change to their one-car entry garage, going from lift format to a drive-in-down garage entry, and the small grade change needed to enter. We know that their builder and engineer have made sure any changes are minimal and environmentally conservative. We look forward to the completion of their new home. Feel free to reach out with any further questions. Best, Janine Burke. 8 Capstan Circle. That's what we have in records.
So, have you looked at, Jonathan just brought this up to me, 9, A, B, C, are you in compliance of the modifications in reference to a special permit? I just wanna make sure you're on record saying that we are in compliance of them.
Yeah, I have a, I've submitted a letter with the application that, that's why I think their site plan and architectural design that are in compliance.
So it is your opinion that section nine, paragraph nine, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, you're all, you're in compliance with?
I'm sorry.
Which state things like?
Can you just point me to the page, I know...
Yeah, page 21.
21, 22.
So it starts in 21, which, I just want to make sure the difference between, it's, it spells out what a minor and a major change is, and more importantly, it gets into 5% increase, a footprint.
Right, we're not increasing any footprint.
I got it.
So, when I...
It's also site plan changes.
Right, there is site plan changes, but again, when you do minor changes to the site plan of the permitted projects, such as landscaping signage, shape location of buildings, architectural details, lot lines and roadway facilities, may have been approved under the terms, so I, I think they all fall within there, um, we're not increasing anything by more than 5%, uh, we're not increasing anything under D more than 10%, um, so, you know, I do feel that it falls under the minor modification, and again, I, I submit that in the letter when I file for these.
About impacting...
Oh, it says 5%.
Abutting landowners with potential water.
How much of a drainage study, Mark, did you do in reference to this water coming down into that one basin?
Um, it's, we have the basin, but it's also, there's a, it's swaled to make it down and around, there, it's, you know, it's not, in my opinion, it's never going to get to the property line, it'll, it'll, if the basin can't handle it, it'll just continue to go down that slope and behind the house.
I'm not familiar with this Capstan circle, is this at the bottom of the circle, this particular lot?
Yeah, it's on the water.
Yeah, it's a...
Right, so if I looked at the circle, is it on the bottom of the circle?
Yes.
In other words, all the water coming down the hill is going to end up...
I don't know that it's...
I'm asking the question, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know that it's...
And is it going to affect any abutters, because that's one of the...
Understood, I think it's actually, this is an improvement over what we had with the abutters, because originally there was a, a wall that was approved that was 15 feet from the property line, now that wall is 28 feet from the property line, so I think it's actually an improvement over what, to any abutting properties as to what's there, what was originally approved by this board.
I've got probably a stupid question if I could ask.
There is no such thing, Jolly.
I'm pretty good at stupid questions, alright, so, we're trying to determine whether it's a minor or a major modification.
Right.
So let's start from the beginning, we have a set of plans, originally approved, and something new is submitted.
Correct.
And the issue is whether the new plans are major or minor difference in what was there before.
Right, so if you...
If you look, no, if you look at the plans, just look at the plans, not the effect of what was done in the plan, but just look at the plan, you know, to me, it does not look like a major change in the plan, but if you take into consideration the effect of what may be a small change in the plan may have relative to the property and the drainage, it's an entirely different thing, the plan may be a ma, a minor change, but the effect may be major.
That is correct.
So, I, I don't know the answer to that.
Not really how your bio reads, it just...
Yeah.
That was a pretty profound stupid question.
And it also comes to the applicant, if the applicant, and I presume the applicant is aware of, I would presume that you sat down with the applicant and talked about risks? Okay, so if that took place, the applicant's going to come in, knowing that the risks exist, it's going to be in favor, I presume, of this plan?
Yeah.
Correct.
Well, if, if the board's done the discussion, I'd like to chime in.
We'd like to hear from you anyway.
I am relieved with these changes.
Relieved?
Yeah, we had a hell of a, we had a heck of a time trying to get this to meet FEMA floodplain calls, I know the designer had a trouble, Mark and I had many meetings over this, they get rid of the, the lift, it, everything's going to comply, I was very nervous about it, I will say to Mark, I assure you will agree, whether we have the changes or not, um, we need to have a, um, construction, during construction, elevation certificate made, especially with these changes, but, um, I think it's, um, I think it's, it's, to me, I'm, I'm more relieved than anything.
So, in your opinion, it solves a problem?
Very, it's, it was a very expensive, it could, it could be a problem, um, a year from now when FEMA audits my, my floodplain, um, reviews for, for CRS, so, um, yeah, I'm relieved, it, it, now it makes it more, it's easier for, it's easier to comply with.
Yeah, and I think that's a...
But, again, and it's, it's whether it's, what's up to the board is, is this minor or major.
That's mine.
Yeah, the lift had components underneath it, creating a sump in the base, creating all sorts of FEMA-related issues.
It was hard to fit it.
We just...
There was a lot of issues that I was very nervous about.
Yeah.
Well, I, I just...
I got a question.
Sure.
So you, you have approved plan right now with, that includes this lift, right?
Yep.
It sounds to me to be a lot more of a problem than what you're presenting here right now today, the lift itself.
Correct.
Correct.
Correct?
No, no, I'm sorry.
Yes, the, the lift was seen, on building code and FEMA-related, the lift was very complicated, making Dave nervous, you know, and that's been...
This is better than what was approved by this board, in, in that, in that sense, you know, water going into the basement is, yeah, I don't know, I don't know that that makes it a, you know, that shouldn't make it rise from a...
It's built to take water in the basement.
Right, I mean, it has flood vents and everything else.
This is a, what's the difference if this is a minor or a major?
Minor, we can get by with it tonight, if it's major, it's going to go, it's going to advertise and...
I got to advertise it and everything else.
I have a special permit.
Minor, we could approve it tonight, major, we have to re, we have to reapprove it, we have to re, we, Mary Ann, I...
Readvertise.
Readvertise it and set up a new...
Have a meeting maybe in October.
And my attitude is, we're going to have, we're going to have a homeowner sitting in front of us, that I presume is going to say is aware of, he and she is aware of all these issues, and wants to go forward with his application.
And that doesn't change if I have to advertise it.
Well, I get it, I get it, I, I, I'm leaning towards the bottom line is, making it minor moving forward, but understand the following.
Right.
I'm very concerned, and that's between the design engineer and the homeowner and the town and this board, has nothing to do with it.
I think that's with any project.
Well, I'm not, you know, I'm not so sure, I've been, you know, I've seen, I've seen things gone, go sideways, and why did we, right, pointing fingers at, why did you guys do that?
Many times.
Yes.
Well, you know, the mitigation, with, with, um, mitigation with conservation was, was approved, um, so I don't see, I don't see this, how, how much is liability?
And they administratively, and they administratively approved it at all.
You know, and what is... I'm okay with making it a minor modification, with the caveat that you understand the statements that I made.
Absolutely.
Okay, just everybody needs to understand that, we're not going to gain anything by making it a major, there's, there's no, no abutters that are writing letters that are concerned, the town...
Yep, the only letter you have is...
The zoning enforcement office isn't concerned, I presume the homeowner is concerned, so what's, what's an advertising going to do?
Right, and there's one abutter letter that is in favor.
Right, so I, I'm not going to gain anything, other than, nothing.
Right.
So the bottom line is, I have no problem making it a minor modification.
Good.
I agree.
Okay, so, I'd like to have a motion that it is a minor modification, and that it, and if we want, after the minor modification, we'll accept the plan.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so let's make, so can someone make a motion that's a minor modification?
Yeah.
With, with the caveat of the statements that I made prior?
Alright, uh, the board has determined that the modifications, first, we're going to vote whether it's a minor modification, so the vote on that, I agree it's a minor modification.
I agree it's a minor.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree, minor modification, now I'd like to have a motion, reference to the approval of the plan with the statements that I made, in reference to the concerns that this board is not accepting any liability whatsoever, nor is the town, in reference to this modification.
So, I just want to make sure the board is accepting that site plan and the desire, the architectural plans that I provided the board?
That's correct.
That are in pink?
That's correct.
Okay.
The motion, the motion before the board is to... That goes sideways.
Yeah, I understand that.
Is to accept, the site plans and the plans submitted this evening and spoken about this evening are relative to the board accepting no, um, legal responsibility for ultimate issues that may occur.
And, and if I could just add to your, to your motion, that the homeowner is aware of any and all of these issues that have been discussed tonight?
Okay, I agree with that.
And accepts them.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Alls in favor?
Alright, great, thank you so much, I appreciate it, thank you, have a great night.
You too.
You can have this back, next time, if you could give me a full one, though, it'd be greatly appreciated, my eyes aren't what they used to be.
Interesting stuff.
Initially, I didn't think it was, I think it's appropriate to be approved.
Exactly. My question is, how is this thing originally approved, for the lift, seriously?
Well, Hans came in a little late. Guy noticed that. Story of his life.
Good job, man, Charlie.
Yep.
Yeah, don't worry.
Okay.
This one's going to hurt, Sonny.
It's funny, though, it could be a, a minor change in the plan, it would have a significant major effect upon what happens as a result.
You're right, you're correct.
Yeah, but...
It could have.
That's not what we're, we're not doing that.
Yeah, I agree with that 100%.
Yeah.
It could have, it could, it may not.
I just don't want to be the, the one on the cross.
No.
You know, I don't want to be that guy, I don't want to be that guy.
No, and I don't mind...
I'm on the cross enough, I don't want to be anymore than that.
The left, the left, that's for sure.
I think it's appropriate to add that on, what you wanted, I think it is...
Hold on, ready?
Don't call me.
Yeah.
We told you.
Alright, next issue, um...
We have a, an approval.
Well, we have a vote to accept peer review process of Mr. Pesci for 868 Falmouth Road ground-mounted solar project. So if you could tell us a little bit about that, you reached out to Mr. Pesci?
I reached out to Mr. Pesci, and he agreed that he would take on the project for the solar, um, peer review, and, um, we have that meeting coming up in, on August 13th.
And that's the public hearing, August 13th?
Yes.
And so Mr. Pesci can do some work before August 13th, so we can report to the board by then?
I'm going to give him the plans, hopefully.
Yeah, that'd be great, so she took the initiative, which is great, reach out to, to Mr. Pesci, so that way, August 13th, we can be, you know, wise individuals in reference to an engineer reporting to us as to his peer review.
I've always wanted to be a wise individual.
Well, you, beginning tonight, you are one.
Okay. So remind me on this, what was this application, 868 Falmouth?
We're hearing it on August 13th.
It's going to be, um...
Is it one that had come to us before?
It came to us on plan review and design review.
But it's not come to this board?
No, it is coming.
It has not come to this board?
Oh, it has not, yeah.
And so she took the initiative before it even comes, to have peer review done, so that way, you know, we can look at that peer review report, and be that much wiser.
Yeah, I'm just... Because this is the same people, isn't it? I know I heard this on plan designer review, but I can't, trying to remember it.
It's the same people.
It's Weston and Sampson, I believe, is the...
Designers?
Yeah, the engineers, it's ne, it's next grid.
It's what?
Next grid.
Got it.
The same people.
But it's not, it's not the same, no, it's not the same project.
Different project?
Well, they were doing a project over...
Trying to do a project.
This is a totally different project.
Okay, they were doing a project over where the storage units were.
Is it that this?
Right, this one is the, is sun life, right, it's behind sun storage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, it's not the one that's up off of 151.
And how much money has Mr. Pesci requested?
Um, on, it's on his...
Yep. 3895, 3800.
Yep, but I, I, um, asked for 10 grand to cover, yeah, and they did provide that.
And they, they accepted that?
They accepted it, and I have a check, yes.
Very nice.
So that's easy.
Good man.
I know.
Well done.
Surprised.